We'll call to order the City of Douglasville City Council Legislative Work Session for tonight, which is Thursday, January the 5th, 2023. Happy New Year. I have already given the announcements and presentations for the meeting during our special city council meeting, and our invocation was already presented to us by Pastor Artley. So we will move on then with items, starting at item number five. So we'll jump right into committee assignments, and we'll move on for the first committee, which is Economic Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mayor Pro Tem Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Economic Development Committee at this time of the beginning of the new year.
Thank you so much, sir. We'll move on then to item number six, which is Finance Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Happy New Year. Finance Committee has no business tonight.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on. Housing and Community Affairs Committee chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under Housing and Community Affairs tonight.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Item number eight, Legislative and Intergovernmental Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, thank you, and happy new year.
Happy New Year.
And we have about A, B, and C.
Yes, sir.
But once I read them, Ms. Vicki going to tie them all in one.
Yes, sir.
And we start with item A, adopt the resolution setting the date for the municipal general election for the City of Douglasville to be Tuesday, November 7, 2023, and directing the city clerk to publish public notice of this election included office to be elected and polling places location. Item B, adopt the resolution setting the qualifying fees for November the 7th, 2023, general election for the City of Douglasville to be $1,188 for the office of mayor and $387 for the office of council member according to the state law, providing public notice of the same. Item C, adopting a resolution providing that all candidates for municipal office in the City of Douglasville municipal general election on November 7, 2023 shall qualify for the candidacy as provided by law with the city clerk beginning Monday, August 21, 2023, through Wednesday, August 23, 2023, with the hours for qualifying each day being between 9:00 a.m., 12:00 noon, and between 1:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m., and providing for the public notice of the same. Now, let's sum it up. Ms. Ackers.
Vicki Ackers, city clerk, municipal election superintendent. Good evening, Mayor, and elected officials. The following, the aforementioned items that are before you are preparation for our election in November. The offices are for the mayor, the council members from wards four and five, and Ward Two, post two. The Georgia Election Code mandates that we set the municipal general election date, also the qualifying fees, the qualifying dates. Our elections are held every two years on the Tuesday following the first Monday in November. Therefore, this election will be set as Tuesday, November the 7th, 2023. The qualifying fees are fixed at 3% of the total gross salary of the office paid in the preceding calendar year. For the office of mayor, that would be $1,188, with the annual salary of $39,600. The council member qualifying fee will be $387, at an annual fee of $12,900. And these fees must be published no later than February the 1st. The Georgia Municipal Qualifying Period is August the 21st through the 25th, 2023. Each municipal superintendent is allowed to designate the days of the qualifying period, which shall be no less than three days and no more than five days. In previous years, we've found that most of the candidates come in and qualify during the first three days. Therefore, our qualifying days will be Monday, August 21st, through Wednesday, August 23rd. And the hours for qualifying each day will be between 9:00 a.m. and 12:00 noon, and between 1:00 p.m. and 4:30. Public notices will be advertised on Saturday, November the 14th, I'm sorry, January the 14th, in the D.C. Sentinel for each item. And that's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ackers. Madam Mayor, have any questions?
I don't know if this should be other business, or if it's kind of related to the elections. So I have received a lot of concerns from the community about signs, and how we still have a lot of signs out for the elections that happen in November and runoffs in December. And so we've been communicating back and forth with code enforcement to try to pick the signs up. But I just wanted clarity for the candidates who are running for the office of mayor and council members to understand. We do have a sign pamphlet in the Community Development Department, and that yard signs people can put up, I suppose, at any time. But those larger signs, in our ordinance, it says they cannot be posted until the last day after qualifying. So in this instance, it will be August 23rd at 4:30. The big signs can go up at that time, but they should not go up anytime before then. Is that correct, Assistant City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
Okay. So it's kind of related, but not related. But people always, you know, are concerned about signs. So the yard signs, when can citizens put those in their yard? Anytime, or?
I can have Ms. Shayla Reed come down, and she's prepared to talk to you all about signs.
Okay. Because that's always a point of contention as well. Because you can put up a sign that has something else, not political, in your yard. I don't know. It's always back and forth. But thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to elaborate and have our staff comment.
So the code in Section 7 of the UDO identifies that for non-residential, it has to be between the same dates of qualifying and then going into the dates of election. So it gives for non-residential and residential, they still have the same parameters. The non-residential does give a limit on the size of the sign. But the non-residential mainly speaks on the color of the ink. It gives those details as far as that you have to have it literally, I think it was the August 23rd date to the November 7th date. That's the only period you can have for any political signs per the code.
Okay. So if there is another, and I'm not sure if any state or county is going on that says political season. So if there was a, if they had something, a general or primary in March, people can put signs up as well, from my understanding.
So it clarifies as from qualifying date to election date. So if there's a primary season that's in March, it falls in that category.
Okay.
So I'm giving the dates based on what I've heard Ms. Vicki Ackers give as the qualifying dates, as well as the election date.
So for city municipal elections, it starts in August. But if there's something state or countywide that's in March, or whenever those times are, that's political season as well, and signs can go up then?
It can, because the code gives it as the qualifying date, as well as the election date. It doesn't give whether it's city versus state.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do we know if there's anything going on with the state or county?
We don't, Madam Mayor. But we can research that, and we can send it out to you all. But to my knowledge, we currently don't have any state elections going on. But we will send that out tomorrow to you all if there is something.
Okay. Very good. So if there aren't any other elections going on, and it's just municipal, we really, the code says we shouldn't put the signs out until?
The last day of qualifying.
Okay.
Yes.
23rd of August.
That's correct.
Then everything can go up. It's lights, camera, action.
Yes, ma'am. As long as it's not in your right of way.
Yes, ma'am. Twelve feet back from the curb.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Thank you so much. I appreciate the clarity. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Shayla. And now the council member. Council Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Quick question. In the resolution for establishing the date of the general election, I noticed that the dates for early voting were left blank. Is that because the state hasn't established those dates yet?
It's because I'm to get with Mr. Milton next week, and he said he would know those dates then.
Okay. So just we don't have the information yet. But it'll be by Monday's vote?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything? Anyone else? Okay. Madam Mayor, I'd like to put this on the consent agenda for Monday, and put the corrections from Ms. Ackers from Milton, if he's contacted her.
Okay. Do we have any opposition for that, or? Okay. All right. Once we get that information, then we'll be able to put it on the consent agenda. And our city clerk says we'll have it by Monday before we vote. Thank you.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much, Councilman Davis. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams. Oh, I apologize. Personal Organization Committee, Councilmember Chris Wasey. I put my eyes back on. I have new glasses.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like, we have one item tonight under Personal Organization to adopt a resolution to establish a new minimum wage amount for city employees to provide for a cost of living increase and to amend the pay scale. Ms. Austin Bing will handle this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. See you, Austin Bing, 6695 Church Street, Human Resources. Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. This item before you, we discussed on the December 15th round, where we made recommendations and research as it relates to the City of Douglasville's minimum wage. Our current minimum wage is $15.20, and we are recommending to increase our minimum wage to $17.50. We presented research where our peers of our size and even smaller are above that $15, excuse me, that $17.50 minimum wage. If it is your pleasure, it will affect about 50 of our city employees. It is within our city budget. And we believe that this increase will help us to attract and to retain and to assist with our turnover rate here at the City of Douglasville. Also, in this resolution, we have spelled out our merit system, and when we would like to make our merit system effective. Merit is tied to annual performance evaluations for those eligible employees. We are looking at February the 16th as the date to apply. Our merit increases citywide. And also in the resolution is a recommendation for a 2% across-the-board COLA increase for all city employees to be paid in March, March the 16th. This is also within what we've already budgeted for fiscal year '23. So we have all of these compensation items before you this evening. I'm happy to take any questions about any of them. But again, they're all within our fiscal year budget.
Any questions from council, or Madam Mayor? Anybody?
She just answered my only question, which was in regards to the budget. So no, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you.
We're constantly competing for folks. Madam Mayor, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Again, I have a question that's on, but might not be on topic. There was an article in the paper on the 3rd of January about a study that was done for law enforcement in the country, and that the general starting pay was $56K. And so I know we are at $50,000 for our starting officers, and the sheriff's department's at $50,773. So I just really wanted our assistant city manager or HR director to really address the concern. I know I did receive some comments from citizens about this and our pay for our law enforcement. And we have tried to be very supportive of law enforcement. So if you can just give us some information, then I'll make a statement, and we can go on with any other concerns. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Mayor, so typically what local municipalities use in their salary surveys is what's called a market analysis. A market analysis compares our peers and our geographic location to each other, and studies what those recommendations are, or what those salaries are in our peer organizations. I understand you mentioned that the national salary is different. But in our, in the last seven years, we've used compensation studies to look at our wages citywide, and that includes our police officers. Within the past five years, we have increased from $38,000 to $44,000 to now $50,000. And we have recommended to you all to continue to do those salary studies every two or three years. And so I do believe we have moved the needle. And I do understand that there's a difference, differentiation between the national. But we have made some adjustments to our police officers' salaries, and we, I think we'll continue to do that as the market allows for us to do that. As far as the number, I think when you look at total compensation, there are things to consider with salaries, such as different benefits, different perks, take home, things like, just outside of what our normal employees would receive, because they are public safety officers, and we want them to have that. And when you compare other municipalities and what we do provide, some they don't, and vice versa. But we also have to consider the total compensation package. When you look at that, salaries can be salaries and benefits, which is about 35%, 35% of the salary. You can be anywhere up to upwards of six figures when you look at the total compensation package. But that is just from research, what we've done here at the City of Douglasville. Assistant City Manager Chief wants to chime in on that. I think we're not too far off, but I do understand, you know, the position and what public safety does for our citizens. So.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. And to the chief, I know we talked before the meeting, and I am definitely a proponent, and I think this council is as well, for public safety. We tried to, as you said, move the needle over the past five years to be competitive. But I know officers will, it's a dangerous job. It's different, and they will go to other communities. But we hope that we can continue to be competitive, and we'll continue to move the needle best we can. You know, my background is law enforcement. I was in the MP unit in the military, and federal law enforcement officer from FLETC and CIA. So I am a public, was Public Safety Chair when I was on city council. So I'm a great proponent, and this council is as well, for the police department. We just want you to know that we hear you, and we're not leaving you behind. But we can't, at this point, compete with the national average because, you know, of where we are as a city. So we will try to get up to that point. I know the chief said we in the subdivision, but we're just, when you come in the starter homes, we're not back there with the, with the state homes. So if you want to say anything, chief.
First of all, I'd just like to thank you all for what you're doing for us. As you, the human resource director stated that we've been getting some good bumps up throughout, throughout the years. And we up to under 51 arena right now in pay. But I know the city manager, and assistant city manager, and HR director, and finance director, they always look for ways that they can find some benefits for us.
Yes, sir.
And, you know, and we appreciate that. You know, how much is enough? I made the statement in the paper. You know, we want to get all we can, but you can't drain the lake. You know, I understand that, and I hope all men and women in the department understand that. You know, that, but they consistently try, and you all have never shied away from giving us the things that we need, whether it's pay, whether it's equipment, fringe benefits. There's a lot of things we do over there that the other departments doesn't do. Haircuts, cleaners, we pay for the cleaners, haircuts, you know, take-home car. You know, people save their money when they do that, take the car home.
Yes, sir.
And not paying for the cleaners, not paying for the haircut, because we want our men and women to look professional. So, but, you know, everybody looking, and you have to look at, I guess, the new millennials, or whatever they call it, Generation Next, I don't know. It's not like it was when I came in. You get a job, you stay there, and you work. But now, you know, the pool, the pool is, two or three years, they're going to run for a dollar fifty cent more, $5 more, and they're paying that in gas going over there.
Well, thank you, chief. And we do support you, and we appreciate the information that you all provide, and retirement as well.
Yes, ma'am, retirement. I was going to mention that as well. Five years vesting is, it's a great benefit. Some of our peers are seven years and 10 years. Five years, it goes by so fast, but that benefit stays with them wherever they go. So if they go to a different municipality, or not, or change fields altogether, they're still vested with the City of Douglasville. And I think as I'm, you know, surveying, surveying my peers, we are one that allows a five-year vesting, and most do not. Most, it's right around 10 in the GMA pool. So I think for attracting talent, and, you know, that is a great option. But, you know, I've also heard that, wow, I can do five years, and if I want to change, but I'm still connected to Douglasville. So that is something to be said for us. And I've been doing this a long time, too, in local government, five years. It's a very attractive tool to come in and to work for the City of Douglasville Police Department, or the City of Douglasville as a whole. So yes, that's another one that we look at when we talk about total compensation package. That is, is a great perk.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to bring that to light, and say again to the chief that we support you. And I just didn't, it looked kind of bad when I said 56, and we were at 51. We're in the ballpark. Yes.
Mr. Adams, did you have something?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to make sure that we're clear. That article, I believe, was a national average?
Yes, sir.
A national average, okay. And the studies that you all are using, Ms. Austin Bing, you are using more of a market analysis based upon peer cities in our general area.
In our geographic location. Yes, sir.
Which, that is, that comparison and that difference in salaries would not just be appropriate for police departments. That would be for anyone. When you look around the nation, what our nation's mayors may be paid, or what our healthcare workers may be paid, or what our accountants may be paid, or architects. So while I'm impressed that we are that close, we're within 10% of that national average, we're probably not within the top 10% overall in salaries within the nation. Being in the southeast, probably not. So I think that is a testament to what we have done in the last three to five years. I believe I calculated that to be a 34% increase.
Yes, sir.
That's better than a third increase in the last five years?
Five years, yes, sir.
Okay. And so I appreciate that article, and I'm hopeful that we'll see the glass half-full rather than half-empty. And I'm sure that our police chief will do a great job in explaining that across the board. But I appreciate all the information. Appreciate the job the chief does, and all of our law enforcement officials. But let's be fair about it. Let's get all the information and compare in our area.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Austin Bing, how many pay studies have we done in the last seven years? I mean, since I've been on the council, it seems like we've done at least two?
Well, we've done three in the last seven years. And then if we look at eight, it will be four, because right when I came, we were in the middle of one. And so since I've been here, we've done three.
So I just, I just would like to say a thank you to personnel, Ms. Austin Bing, and finance, and Ms. Hampton, that we've stayed ahead, tried to stay ahead of the curve, you know, through COVID and everything else, the problems that have been presented. Y'all have done a great job. You know, it's a constant battle out there to keep folks, everywhere you drive, you see for sale signs. The only difference is, you know, private sector is one thing, but we're paying salaries with the tax dollars of the citizens. So we have to be good stewards of that. I think, I think we have been, at the same time, we're trying to compete. And I think we've done a good job of, you know, I worked 37 years at the same school, and I never turned down a raise that was offered. But I always wanted to make more. But, you know, there's only so much blood in the turnip. Chief said, you don't drain the lake. But, you know, but if you like where you work, and we do a good job of taking care of our employees, as chief pointed out. So I'm singing our song here, and I'll shut up now. Anybody got anything else to say? Yes, Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I'd reiterate what's been said, and to the chief's point as well. I think it's the, I think it's the mood of this council to want to treat our employees as professionals. I mean, especially in the police department, you know, being a police officer is not a job. It's a calling. And they're trained to be professionals, and they're treated like professionals. And we should pay them like professionals. And that goes citywide. We, you know, we have people in every department where, you know, we're going to, if we're going to retain people, we need to treat them as the professionals that they are. And part of that goes with the pay. Definitely, I think, on behalf of the council, we appreciate the work you've done to keep us competitive with a lot of these other communities. And to Councilman Adams' point, you know, we can't compete with Atlanta. We're not going to compete with Chicago. We're not going to compete with New York. You know, that just, but on the flip side of that, you know, if you're an officer in one of those cities, you're going to get a little more activity, probably, in a place like that than you are in Douglasville. But that being said, you know, the pay should be consonant with the location. And I think, I think we're doing so far.
Costs a lot more, costs a lot more to live up there, too.
Yeah. And that, that's exactly the case. The cost of living is vastly different in a place like that as well. So it's one of the advantages that we have.
Any other questions or comments from council before I ask for permission to place us on the consent agenda for Monday night? Thank you, Ms. Austin Bing, for that presentation, and all the comments that were made. And we will place us on the consent agenda for Monday. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, that's all I had.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the lively discussion from council members and our staff as well. We'll move on then to Planning and Development Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Mark Adams.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have several items tonight. We'll begin with item A, tabled from December 19, 2022. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining for plus or minus 9.77 acres on Chicago Avenue and Van Zant Mill Road Land Lot 224, District 2, Section 5, Parcels 28 and 34, application by the Benoit Group LLC, care of Raven Thompson. And Ms. Shayla Reed is here to help us with that.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Shayla Reed, Community Development Director. This item has come before you a number of times for this particular item. Staff is recommending withdrawal of this particular item. The applicant has asked to have this item withdrawn for item A, and that's to allow for B and C to be considered.
Okay. So after having been tabled several times, it appears from what you're telling us, Ms. Reed, that items B and C will take care of what the applicant needs without having to go forward with item A?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Anything that the applicant would like to say concerning it? It's not a, it's not a public hearing, but if there's any information the applicant would like to share, we would welcome that.
She said that's fine. Well, thank you.
Okay. Questions, comments, or council?
Question? Just confirmation, this project is moving forward. It's not dying, right?
No, this particular item is coming off of the agenda to allow for B and C to move forward.
To move forward.
Moving right along, moving right along.
Perfect, perfect.
Any others? All righty. We'll take that up then on Monday for a vote. We'll move on to item B. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining 38.37 acres on 6903 James D. Simpson Avenue, Land Lot 224, District 2, Section 5, Parcels and 022402-514, application by the Benoit Group LLC, and Planners and Engineers Collaborative Plus, care of Raven Thompson, and B. Cathenlium. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. So there are nine parcels. If I can give just a little history on this project. The first item that we were attempting to hear, there were parcels that would have been landlocked if these parcels, if that particular plat had moved forward. Staff has worked with the applicant over the last few weeks, and we have found to be where this particular plat allows for the nine parcels to be merged into one, and allowing for them to now have clearance and no longer having the landlocking issue. With that, staff reviewed it, found it to be within the UDO. Correction was made to the memo that it does, in fact, meet the UDO for this particular item, and staff is recommending approval of this particular item.
Thank you, Ms. Reed. So we've gone a different direction, but in all, basically, we were making sure in this plat that there was nothing that was left landlocked.
Correct.
And that now has been perfected through this item, if approved, with this plat approval.
Correct, sir.
Okay. Questions, comments? Okay. If there are none, then we will, this is not something that we can put on the consent agenda. You all understand my point for Monday night, right? A short meeting so that we can move along to other things. But I won't
But I won't request that this be placed on the consent agenda. There are more things. There are things more important than this. Item C. Consider a request for plat appro-- I shouldn't have said that. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining 10.9 acres on 8288 Chicago Avenue and landlot 224, District 2, Section 5, parcels 022402-50013, 022402-50028, and 022402-50034. Application by the Benoit Group LLC, care of Raven Thompson. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. So this process or this project, I apologize, is the same as the previous two items. However, this particular item is the correction that allows for those four parcels that were mentioned to be merged into, excuse me, those three parcels that were mentioned to be merged into one parcel, allowing for those landlocking issues to no longer be an issue and concern there. There is a note where the fire marshal is asking for there to be a conditional approval on this one to ensure that either a second means of access is granted or there be a requirement for sprinklers for each of the residential dwellings.
Okay, so Ms. Reed, basically then, this is actually the piece of property where the development will actually be done as far as the multifamily project, correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. And whether it be because the state fire marshal requires it or because there is not availability of a second entrance to the premises, then sprinklers may very well be required and the applicant, I'm assuming, understands that?
Correct.
Okay. Because that's the only way that it will be approved with that condition?
That is correct, sir.
Okay, there is no other way for the property to be accessed from another street? It's not been presented that way?
It has not been presented that way, correct.
Okay, okay. Questions, comments? Madam Mayor?
I do have a question. I know I just read over all the responsibilities for the committees, and this probably would fall under public safety with fire departments. So are we going to put a contingency on the the on this item or it's open and it is they have to follow the the rules from the fire department, from state or local?
Well, I would I would assume that they have to be approved by the state fire marshal as far as their plans.
Okay.
And that may be that it's it's required by the state fire marshal for sprinklers regardless.
I think I think the for this type of of resident multi because multifamily residential, I think you'd have to have sprinkler system no matter what.
But the condition is there in case it is not otherwise required because there's not another entrance.
That's correct. So the fire marshal, his review falls under community development because he serves as a review agency for the community development on plat reviews and any of the the plan reviews. So with that, even though the the state requirement says you can do multiple different things, you can do either the second entrance or you can do the sprinklers. You don't have to do them both. So he's putting the caveat that you would be required to do either or. So even though they may be required to do sprinklers, they wouldn't have to do the sprinklers if they put the second entrance.
Okay.
So it's it gives the two different options is what the fire marshal is saying. And he's saying ensuring that they in fact move forward with the sprinklers or the second road of entrance, put it as a condition to ensure that when it's time for the land disturbance permit, the second road is installed.
Right.
Or during the building permits, the sprinklers are insured. But the fire marshal will be reviewing it during that time for either of the LDP or the building plans to ensure that that condition is being adhered to.
Yes, and both of those issues are very expensive, either or, so everyone knows in advance, and it would not be contingent upon, okay.
And it'll also depend on the classification of the construction as well. So depending on what materials you use, if it's wooden construction, if it's used concrete, steel, whichever, so that that all has a bearing on the requirements.
But but let's be very clear, Mayor Protem. I believe what the fire marshal is saying, our local fire marshal is saying that since there does not appear to be a second entrance available, then they will have to have sprinklers regardless of what the classification is. Is that is that correct?
He's putting it on record to require it, basically.
Okay, so they will be sprinkled. And the developer is aware of that?
Yes, they have a copy of the staff report.
All right. Thank you. Others? Okay, we'll move along then. That would cover item C, which we'll take up on Monday night for a vote. Thank you, Ms. Shayla Reed. Don't go very far. Item D, tabled from December 19, 2022. Consider a request for a development plan approval for the Astoria at Crystal Lake Senior Living Development on 9.77 acres, Chicago Avenue, landlots 193 and 224, District 2, Section 5, parcels 022402-50034 and 022402-50028, for plans dated September 7, 2022. Application by the Benoit Group LLC, Mr. Marcus Thompson.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It's good to see you guys back. Hope you enjoyed your holiday. Got off to a great new year.
Yes, sir.
All right, Marcus Thompson, City Engineer, 6701 Church Street, Douglasville, Georgia, 30134. Just for a brief recap, the project involves the construction of a three-story apartment complex with a total of 165 units, 119 one-bedrooms and 46 two-bedrooms. The site plan indicates one access to the development from Chicago Avenue. The applicant proposes a total of 165 off-street parking spaces. Amenities include but are not limited to a community room, fitness center, community garden, elevators, closed circuit cameras, and secured building interests. Interests. The proposed materials are brick, fiber, cement siding, aluminum, and metal. Please find attached the application, site plan, building elevations, and the building facade material with percentages shown. City staff has reviewed the application and attachments and recommends approval with the following conditions. First, camera systems, camera system installations at development interests, all development interests per the City of Douglasville ordinance 2022-24 rezoning condition. Secondly, the approval of the existing plat to combine parcels parcels number 002402-534, 0022402-528, and 0022402-5013 into one parcel on 8288 Chicago Avenue. Also, in addition to the approval of the exemption plat to combine parcels 002, I mean 022402-5005, 022402-5006, 002, wait, zero? It's a lot of a lot of numbers.
It's a lot of zeros.
James D. Simpson Avenue. Lastly, but not least, the installation of a sidewalk east of Chicago Avenue along with the proposed right turner lane. And we have discussed this with the applicant, and they are in agreeance to the conditions.
Now you know how I feel, Mr. Thompson.
Yeah, that was a lot.
It's a lot of numbers. You should have said eight, nine, 10, 11, 12.
So what I so so this then is the development plan for the development that we've just talked to in the last several items.
That's correct.
And you mentioned that it is planned for one entrance, but there's no mention of the sprinkler system being required. Why not?
The comments I received back and I I sent those comments to Dakota that I received back from fire, and I mentioned the the sprinkler system and the second entrance. So I was, yeah, it was, I guess, miscommunications.
Well, the problem that I see then is that we're moving very quickly now, once we've gotten started. We're moving very quickly through the process, and we are saying that the fire marshal is going to require them as a part of the development plan or as a part of the construction plans. Clarification there.
So that will be a requirement for the either the building code or the second entrance, which will be the LDP side of things. And so if there's not noting a second entrance, then definitely you'll pick it up during your building permit process.
Okay, so it would not be a problem to 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 approve the development plan without that requirement because the building department is going to require that as a part of the construction process?
But if you approve my item with the conditions, it still covers Marcus for his conditions.
Okay. Okay, to want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Moving right along. Madam Mayor?
I hear what you're saying. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. I really would like for it to reflect, I don't know if we could, if it's going to be covered, that's fine, and we all understand, and we have a meeting this taped. But in this situation like this, because it's been so much conversation, and we've been going through this particular item with the Benoit Group for such a long time, it will be nice if the left hand and right hand knew what each other was doing and it was really spelled out. So I don't know if we could do that, Mr. Chairman, or if it's it's going to be okay because they're telling us it's going to be covered, but I really like for things to be in writing if at all possible.
Well, staff is telling us that if we if we approve items B and C, then it would be covered when we approve D. Is that correct, Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. Let me explain the process. The way that the because my items happens before Marcus, anything that happens in the first phase, which is on the community development side, it covers for whatever Marcus is touching because when he does his reviews, he's pulling all of the items from where my items, for example, he makes the cameras that came during the zoning process.
Okay.
So he's pulling all the past records that's coming from community development to play society's development plan.
Okay. So we're covered?
We're covered. I understand, I just.
We don't want to do anything to hold up the process.
No, we don't.
These folks have been these folks have been through the wringer many times, and we want to make sure that we move forward. But at the same time, we want to make sure that everyone understands the field they're playing in and what's required.
Yes, sir. It just makes me when it says conditions, that's a condition, but it's going to be covered.
I like to make note as well, so I have the condition of, you know, this being approved prior to the exemption plat, which covers her items.
It was just pulled recently, okay.
So you won't be changing the order in which they would be considered. This being a development plan, we have been approved, I believe this would be the first meeting that we could in fact place this on the consent agenda as an approval development plan and not have to go through it again on Monday night. If the if the council is not comfortable with that because of these questions, then we'll take it up again on Monday night. But it'll be fast.
You're answering for me.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem.
I just, yeah, I just think we have to be careful about when we start to impose conditions that overlap into the building code, you know, because I mean, we could sit here and say, okay, well, we also put a condition requiring one-hour walls between all the units. You know, we could do that, but that's already covered. And so that's why I just want to, you know, I I would be of the mindset not to get too far into the weeds on requirements.
I think our staff is taking care of that.
Yes, sir. May I speak on the the item of the order, if you're okay with that?
Sure.
So the reason this item was tabled with the community development item is because the plats need to be approved first.
Yes, ma'am.
So the development plan couldn't go on consent if it remains.
And it and it could not be placed before it because I we will cover the items, this being on now, this being on if we place this on the consent agenda, however, then have we not gotten the cart before the horse?
Can I ask a question since you brought that up? I mean, we have to remove it from the table.
Let me see if I can get this one answered. If we placed item D on the consent agenda, would it not then be approved because we approved the consent agenda in our meeting prior to items B and C?
But that will be approved before you're approving the plats.
Correct.
So we wouldn't want to do that. We would want to keep it in the order that it's on now.
Thank you. Okay. Then I don't request that it be placed on the consent agenda. Go ahead.
Well, I I just saw that it was tabled, so it's going to have to be removed from the table.
Right, so we can't do that anyway. All right, all right. Yes, Madam Mayor?
I apologize. Okay, cameras, it says that first bullet for conditions and it is via the City of Douglasville's ordinance that we passed in 2022. So I just want to chief, I know we're down officers, this is is this zone going to be, is that one camera at the entrance okay, or are we going to have other cameras throughout the subdivision? Because we're having a lot of development in the New Horizons community. This is part of it in on Chicago Avenue, right around the corner, Malone Road. So we have a lot of apartments coming up.
I think it is part of the thing that myself and and Ms. Reed talked about when she first got here is that the City of Douglasville want to make sure that we have some type of lock camera systems in the entrance and exits of these apartments that we see being built around here.
Okay.
That it help us in our investigation of crimes that occur may be may occur in these areas. So I think the builders should that that should be something that they should want to do in the to help secure their their tenants.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
So the cameras are fine based on the ordinance of what you recommended for this development?
Yes.
Okay.
And Mayor, that's an existing condition that this development already has with their previous rezoning.
Oh, perfect. Thank you.
Other questions? All righty, then we will take this up on Monday. Thank you all. And I think it would then again be Ms. Reed's turn. Item E. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of combining 24.668 acres on 1250 Blair's Bridge Road, landlots 581, 616, and 617, District 18, Section 2, parcel Application by East Group Properties LP, care of Kristen Brannon. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. This particular piece of property has a existing structure or frame for a warehouse. There is four parcels. Amongst the four parcels, they're looking to merge three and a portion of the fourth to allow for there to be one technical handling of paperwork versus the four separate parcels having four separate taxes, four separate means of 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 needs and records. They're looking to merge so there can be one site, basically.
So they're requesting that the the building and the parcels be combined into one parcel. Some of this, I believe, this this intersects Interstate 20 right near the Thornton Road exit? Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
And so as as you travel east on I-20, you can see that there's work being done in that area. And with one building on it, they're just wanting to combine to one tax bill. Questions, comments? Anyone from the East Group that needed to make any any comments? Okay, seeing none, we'll take that up on Monday night. Ms. Reed, thank you.
Thank you.
Last item, I promise. Consider a request for plat approval for the purpose of adopting Glen at Kensington Phase 2A-2 on 36.64 acres, Summerlin Parkway, landlots 757 and 810, District 18, Section 2, parcel 07571820033, and a portion of parcel 08101820055. Application by DC Kensington LLC, care of Daniel Fields. Ms. Reed?
Yes, sir. In review of this item in recent, I guess in the last day, we have identified that this particular parcel has a different parcel number than what the county has. So the county and the city's numbers are different. So staff is asking to pull this item off of the agenda to allow us to communicate with the county's GIS tax system so that we can confirm what the actual parcel number is because the records are two different things, the city and then the staff. With that being said, any action tonight wouldn't necessarily have the right record if we don't have the correct parcel number. So we're asking to pull it off and then bring it back to you at a later time.
All right, and we will take that up on Monday night as far as a vote.
Yes, sir.
But you are asking that it be withdrawn? Or that or that city city remove it from the agenda?
Withdrawn is probably better because it has a record of a incorrect number. And so it would be best to allow them to put a new application in with the correct information.
Thank you. Questions, comments? All righty, thank you, Ms. Reed.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate all the hard work.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I believe that's all that we have tonight.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman. It was handled very well. Thank you to staff and Mr. Thompson reading all those numbers, and Ms. Reed, we appreciate you. We'll move on then to the next committee, which is Public Relation, I mean, Public Improvement and Beautification Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Nicole Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We do have one item this evening.
We do have one item this evening. That's to authorize the mayor to sign a letter to Douglas County Emergency Management Agency to confirm the City of Douglasville's participation in updating the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, and Mr. Greg Roberts is going to come talk to us about that.
Hey, good evening, Mayor and City Council. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And I concur with Mr. Adams about Monday. But anyway, so this item is something that the city has participated in through the Douglas County Emergency Management Agency. And this is particularly related to hazard mitigation as it relates to if we had another, for example, the two thousand nine flood, and there were several properties that were identified that were a danger zone, and so this would keep us in line to work through the local EMA office and to receive funds through FEMA and GMA to, I don't want to use the word eradicate, but I guess I just did, but to basically dispose of some of those properties. There are several that were done that way following that flood, if you know, throughout the city where there's a flood stage. And so they were identified as problem areas, and it, it sort of was funneled through WSA for the most part. But I know the city, we, we removed a lot of houses after that as well, in Arbor Station. And so that's just to keep us in line to get that seventy-five to ninety percent funding. So when, when it refers to a match, it's a small match, but we don't know today how to call it, because it would depend on what that disaster was and what the dollar value was, whether it would be classified at one of the percentages. But our percentage would, would basically be no more than twenty-five percent, and they would be paying the bulk, if that makes sense. I, I've just, I was going through that to make sure you don't get confused with the mutual aid items that we have.
I know. I think I'm a little confused now, because when we talked about it earlier, I was thinking that our match was in, not in dollars, but in, in manpower.
Well, it, it, it can be, but this is kind of hypothetical. This is keeping us in place to be able to get those funds.
Right.
So without this agreement, we wouldn't, we wouldn't really have a path for those funds.
So, although we hope this doesn't happen, but, but basically if, if the worst does happen, we have the agreement in place.
Yeah, and, yes, ma'am, and and, and the flood is the most recent thing, and I would say that is the most likely thing that would cause the, that would be required here. Because that was, I, I can't imagine other disasters that would put us in this particular issue. I don't, we're not like some of the western states where they have fires and we may want to buy an area out through federal funds, you know what I mean? So I think floods are the greatest concern as it relates to this.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for explaining that. Do you guys have any questions?
I do, Madam Chair. So Mr. Roberts, now this, the letter that is dated for, the council authorized me to sign on the ninth, in that first paragraph, it says, "We also understand that there is a local match requirement which can be met in part by participation of county paid staff in the plan update process, and we understand that there is no cash match for this grant, and therefore no monetary obligation on the part of the City of Douglasville."
That's true. And, and while I'm probably not explaining it correctly, it, it, it's to cover the county staff, the EMA staff, which currently that's two people. But whatever contract staff they might have to bring in, you know, there were a lot of people brought in after the flood.
Right.
We, even here at the city, we had a lot of people working on those forms that we were working through with FEMA and GMA. And in fact, I think we made the last transaction with FEMA just only about two years ago, you might remember. It, it literally took more than ten years to get past the flood. But this is keeping us in line to receive those funds post-event. If we were to identify properties that are a danger for future,
Right.
we could purchase those properties and handle that. Yes.
But I guess I was just echoing what the chair said. Here it doesn't say we have a match, that the county will do the match, and that we're just really supposed to do in kind through staff. But you're saying it could possibly be a thirty percent match, financial?
Twenty, twenty-five would be the, would be the most. But.
I'm a little bit confused.
And if, if you want me to get some clarification from Mr. Millholland for Monday night, I can.
I think I would appreciate that, just for future planning, if that's okay.
Yes, because it does says we don't have a match, financial match, in the agreement.
Oh, hold on. I think Ms. Jackson might have an answer for us.
Yes, Madam Mayor and Chairwoman, what we'll do, we'll go back through the paperwork. We'll have legal look through it, and then we'll have, we'll send out a memo to you all tomorrow as regards to this item, so you all are fully prepared on Monday to vote regarding this item, so you all know whether it's in kind or whether we're having to have a match.
Okay. Thank you. Were there any other questions? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Quick tangential question. Do we still own these properties in Arbor Station that flooded out?
Well, so those really went through WSA, and I, I would have to get back to you on that, Mayor Proton. It's been, it's been so long ago.
We'd have to, I mean, at some point, we have to decide what we want to do with those properties, I would assume, that, you know, if we still own them. But I'm curious to know if we, if we do own those.
There, there are several throughout the city that were demolished as a result of that. And the county's been having some issues with their GIS map, and I was unable to pull some of those up to confirm ownership now.
If we, if we do still own them, it may be worth a future discussion with council on how, what, maybe making some of those parcels into public spaces, you know, something, something along those lines. Again, coming back to my park issue and.
And I believe the answer to that is they're actually under WSA.
Okay.
Even though we were involved in a lot of the demolition of some of those properties, because it was such an eyesore. But it really was sort of funneled through WSA, and they're the ones that are dealing with a lot of those. Because I know you mentioned one to me several weeks ago, over off Hospital Drive, there was a home over there that was a part of that.
Well, we may just need an advocate on the WSA board then, for us.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. If there's not any more questions, since we're going to look at this again Monday, let's, don't put that on the consent. All right. Thank you, guys. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Mr. Roberts. We appreciate you, our Public Works Director. We'll move on to Public Relations Committee, and that's chaired by Councilmember Howard Estes.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, the PR Committee has no business this evening.
Thank you, sir. And we will move on then to item thirteen, which is Public Safety Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Samuel Davis.
Yes, ma'am. Madam, Madam Mayor, item A, Holy Hearing and Considered Revocation or Suspension of the Malt Beverage, Wine, and Spirit Liquor Consumption on the Premises Alcohol License Held by Allure Lounge LSC for Non-Compliance with the City of Douglasville Code Ordinance. Ten dash one-four, now, absent, please come down, please. State your name and.
Stephanie Harris, seven-ninety Concourse Parkway, Suite B, Douglasville, Georgia, three-zero-one-three-four.
And, and you help her?
Melvina English, Allure Lounge, seventy-ninety Concourse Parkway, Suite B, Douglasville, Georgia, three-oh-one-three-four.
Madam Mayor, I met with Karen and Shane and Joelle and, and other. And at this time, Madam Mayor, I'm going to take no action. I'd like to put it back on the agenda for, for Monday.
So we're not going to hear?
Are we required to have a hearing?
We're not going to hear tonight.
In this particular case, under the ordinance, you have to give notice to the license holder of a hearing. The notice sent to the license holder specified January the ninth as the hearing day, so we don't have any bar, we have a hearing tonight.
Got you.
Okay, so that's what's going on.
Thank you, Jo, thank you, Joelle.
So we will have a hearing on Monday?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Nice.
All righty. So what happened with the advertisement? Do we not do the, from staff? Do we not send out, typically we have a hearing on the legislative work session and then the vote on Monday, so how is this going to? What, first of all, what happened? Because we have confusing dates from our agenda and what was advertised or what was sent to the applicant? And how do we handle not having a hearing on Monday and a vote, I mean, a hearing on Thursday and a vote on Monday when we're having a hearing on Monday, the same day we're supposed to vote?
Madam Mayor, I'll have Mr. Shane Bird come down to explain the process, but a letter was sent out stating, was sent out to Allure Lounge stating that the public hearing will be on January ninth.
So why is it on our agenda for the, the fifth? Okay, Mr. Bird, you can give us your name and address for the record.
Shane Bird, Accounting Manager at sixty-six ninety-five Church Street with the City of Douglasville. We are presenting tonight just the item that is scheduled for Monday's meeting. We talked with Councilman Davis and other staff this afternoon just regarding how to handle this. This is the first revocation hearing we've, we've experienced. So we have determined that Monday would be the appropriate time to hear this item.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman? We are required to have only one hearing, correct? And that is the date that it's advertised to be. So tonight, we've put on notice what will be going on on Monday, then, basically. Which is basically the same thing as we do in our other items. On Thursday, we prepare for a vote on Monday, so. In my understanding, we're, we're right in line with how it needs to be done. Thank you, sir.
All right. I understand all of that. I'm just saying it, on the agenda, it says hold a public hearing. And so we, we're going to do everything on Monday, because we don't have to have two public hearings. We only need to have one.
Correct. And there was no advertising requirement in the local organ for this item. So this is, this allows us to preclude that requirement that we normally have for alcohol application requests, where there's a, a public hearing advertisement put in the paper.
So what, were the members of Allure Lounge notified that they didn't have to come tonight, before tonight?
We were under the assumption that they would need to be here tonight, so just to be safe in the event that, that council did decide that they wanted to discuss it, we did notify them that there was a legislative work session tonight where business is discussed, and then voting takes place on Mondays.
Okay. Understand, but so it was just a mistake to put it on the, for the hearing for tonight?
Um, no, Madam Mayor. And then I'll ask the city attorney, Mr. Joel, to explain further what we discussed earlier regarding, since we did send out a letter stating it was January ninth, that just to be on the safe side legally, we should just only have the meeting or the, the public hearing on January ninth, instead of tonight.
Your ordinance requires notice to an applicant or license holder before you can revoke or take any action adverse to their holding of the license. The notice was set for January the ninth. You don't need to talk about it tonight, because the hearing you're having Monday, it's a public hearing. That means the public can come, but it's not like, like a zoning hearing where members of the public get up and talk. This is more akin to a trial, in which the city will have to introduce evidence of why the applicant should have the license revoked, suspended, probated, whatever. And the applicant will have the right to cross-examine witnesses and present their own evidence if they so desire. So basically, you can't try it, but, so we ain't going to try it tonight.
Yes, sir. So it sounds like this is municipal court?
Very similar.
But, but it's going to be on the mayor and council versus?
Well, the municipal court doesn't grant the license.
Yes, the council does, through the permitting process.
You, you gave it, you can own, you're the one can take it away, so the municipal court's got nothing to do with this sort of hearing.
Okay. And this is just an awkward way of getting to where we are, because we have not done a revocation before, correct?
Correct. This is a new process that we're standardizing.
Several years. The council's done them in the past, but we probably haven't had one here in eight or nine years.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much for the explanation. Thank you, Attorney Dodson. We appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. Shane, Mr. Bird, and staff.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all the comments or concerns I had. You have anything else, Mr. Councilman Davis? You're welcome. We'll move on then to Recreation, Culture, and Tourism Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Chris Watts.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business tonight in Recreation, Culture, and Tourism.
Thank you, sir. Technology Committee, chaired by Mayor Proton Terry Miller.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have no business under the Technology Committee at this time.
Thank you, sir. And our last committee is Transportation Committee. That's chaired by Councilmember Dr. LaShawn Burdanley.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have one item, and the item tonight is adopt a resolution approving a project's list for the city's application for the Georgia Department of Transportation, GDOT Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, which is also known as LMIG, for two thousand twenty-three. Authorize city council to submit the LMIG application and authorize the mayor to sign the local government affidavit and certification and the LMIG statement of final project expenditures in connection with the application. Mr. Roberts?
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and thank you, Ms. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Burdanley. Greg Roberts, Public Services Department. So this is a list of nineteen streets, totals about four-point-oh-four-two miles, an estimated cost of about one-point-seven-five-five million dollars. This is a little bit larger than we normally do with an LMIG, but this, this will be paid for from the twenty-sixteen splosh. And so this is, there's currently approximately two million dollars in there, and Ms. Callan estimates that there will be about another million in there collected between now and about April. So we'll still have, if, if the costs go the way they should, we should have about one-point-two million left for other projects that Mr. Marcus Thompson and I have been talking about. So, and as always, we try to operate these projects very conservatively. So we try to estimate high, and hopefully they come in low. Oil and fuel prices are moderating down, so that should be to our advantage compared to some of the more recent asphalt-type work that we have completed. So this list is based off of the ratings that were provided to us by AECOM, where they rated all of our streets anew last summer. And as you know, we have a council retreat later this month, and we'll talk more about that list and streets that we will do under the splosh that was just approved this past November, that we'll start generating funds through, starting in April of this year. So if you have any questions about any of these streets, or if you want to make some changes, I can certainly make that happen over the next couple of days between now and Monday, so.
Thank you, Mr. Roberts. I have a question in regards to Huey Road. So that road, and also Strickland, part of that, and Ellis too, I guess Huey, Ellis, and Strickland. I was under the impression that those roads would be paved, the cost would go back to GDOT because of Highway ninety-two. Are we incurring that cost?
Well, we can pick back up on conversations with them on that. But they did pave Malone Road for us, and we never did really get a commitment on this particular part for the road. And one of the reasons that we need to do this, that I'll mention not only tonight, but we can also talk about at the retreat, or even between now and the retreat, is that, you know, months ago, we talked about making this, what I'm going to refer to as a counterclockwise one-way.
Right.
Where East Strickland Street at the bridge over the new ninety-two, eastbound is one-way eastbound, and then Ellis is one-way westbound. And it's because we just do not have enough right-of-way area to make a two-lane road, because we know that now we're dealing with commercial trucks over there. And we always have, but it just wasn't too much of an issue until the railroad required, and, and that's no problem, I'm not saying anything about the railroad. It was just a part of what they required with that retaining wall along the road. So we lost, for this conversation, eighteen inches of road, but that road was within their right-of-way.
Right. And I understand that. It's just, I know that, that road, the truck traffic was diverted there when Highway ninety-two was under construction. It was under my, not impression, but conversation that GDOT was going to pave that road and pay for it. It was part of the budget for Highway ninety-two relocation project. I just want to make sure we're not paying for that twice. We're not paying for that if it's already paid for.
It has not been, we've not received any funds for that, other than I'm suggesting that we do this this spring, if we, if we approve this list, to go ahead and get those streets intact and get them where we need them. Now, we can talk more with District Seven to see what they're willing to help us with, or what we demand of them to help us with.
Does anyone else have any questions? Yes, ma'am, Mayor?
Yes, ma, go ahead, Madam Mayor.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Adams, for yielding to me. Madam Chair, I, Mr. Roberts, if you can pull that part of the agreement that we have, so that we'll see if GDOT is indeed, and I try, I know you know it like the back of your hand, the agreement, to see if they are supposed to pave, pay for the resurfacing of those streets that they really messed up when they were doing their, you know, doing the relocation project. So just to see where, and I know it's our, ultimately our responsibility, especially when they turn the streets back over to the city. We are mandated to resurface ones that need to be resurfaced, and it is, in our rating system. in our rating system. So, that's the one concern, and just to have that pulled so that I can see for myself, and I'll call Commissioner McMurray to speak with him at GDOT to see if, maybe we can partner if they are responsible or that they need to go ahead and pay for the streets to be resurfaced in that area.
And I can reach out to the District 7 representative, his name is failing me right now, I haven't talked to him in a while. I'm not aware of any actual written agreement that would do that, but we'll certainly find that if that's there. I can email him tonight and hopefully talk to him between now and early on Monday.
Yes, sir.
So, we will definitely do that, but I'm sorry if there's a misunderstanding there.
Oh, no, we're just trying to... Councilmember Burdanley brought up an issue, I just wanted to make certain that we try to, we don't have to pay for something we don't need to pay for, we can put the money somewhere else. So, that was the one thing, and then LMIG, Local Maintenance and Improvement Grant, is that specifically for resurfacing, does that preclude us from doing sidewalks or anything through that same grant?
We can identify a number of roadway-type projects for that.
So, I would like to put on the radar, since we have, you said we have $2 million now from 2016 SPOLOST, and we have not gone into the next SPOLOST that the voters were so graciously, you know, voted for in 2022, where we have the 200,000 left out of this, or my math may be off, and you said we had another 1.2 million coming, if we can look at Strickland Street to put sidewalks, we did have a study done, and it's $1.6 million to do the sidewalks there, if we can look at that as a council when we go to our retreat, that would really feed into the whole revitalization for downtown and amphitheater having more walkability. I know we do have money for head bike and pedestrian trails, but if these monies can be used as well, and it's only a 30% match, maybe we can put Strickland Street on there as a project.
And when I made reference earlier that myself and Mr. Thompson, along with Ms. Callen and City Manager Ms. Hampton, were talking about those things, so those are the things that we will definitely be talking to you guys about at the retreat.
Yes, sir.
So, there's a number of sidewalk and concrete projects that we're looking at, some have been identified by some of our contractors, as you've mentioned, such as AECOM and...
Yes, sir.
I think maybe Jacob, someone else had worked with Mr. Thompson, and so, we are aware of what we're needing to do on some of those. And so, the answer is yes, and it could be used for this, but those projects are... This is... This LMIG, the GDOT funds are $356,000 with that 30% match, so this is a lot bigger project, tying it in with LMIG than we normally do. But I was just trying to get some of these streets addressed, particularly Church Street out here as well. We will definitely be talking about sidewalks.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Adams?
They've covered it already, thank you, Madam Chair.
Oh, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Councilmember Miller, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you. I was just going to ask, kind of piggybacking on Madam Mayor, or another question off that, if we are, in fact, due funds on some of this repaving, can we still move forward with our list and then they could just pay us back?
I'm going to say yes.
Okay.
But the conversations with some of that that I'm aware of is some of the ride-arounds we did with GDOT representatives where they had mentioned, and they did pave Malone Street, some of that conversation involved the county as it related to Huey, not our part of Huey so much, but that other part of Huey, going back toward Malone Road and industrial access area, and I'm not sure what the results of all that was between the county and GDOT.
Thank you.
We can move forward, we don't want to stop the train.
Right. Yes, thank you. Are there any other questions or comments? May I approach you?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I noticed that you have a completion date of November 1st on every one of the projects, your assumption is that to get the entire package done by November, is that the goal?
Yes, and with approval of this particular list, or if you guys want it tweaked between now and Monday night, with approval and we get the funding from GDOT, we can go ahead and put this out to bid, say in a month or so, and hopefully have a contractor ready to roll, say, in this conversation, April or May, if we get good bid responses and have a contractor working.
I know the two streets you have in Arbustation definitely badly in need of Lakewood, definitely need to be repaved.
Yes.
Sooner the better. Thank you, Madam Chair.
You're welcome. Any other comments or questions?
Church Street with the amphitheater.
Yes, so, and as part of that project at the amphitheater, and Mr. Thompson and I, along with Ray Lynn Associates down there, have talked about, so Ray Lynn was going to do some asphalt in front of it, but my hope is that we make this one continuous solid pave without it looking like a patch.
Right.
And so, hopefully, we can pave all of this in May-ish, and our concentration might be more on Church Street to get started early, because that's going to be a big project, it needs to be done in really warm weather. I'm in a lot of conversation with WSA over all these patches. Hopefully, you should see some asphalt work out there tomorrow by WSA's contractor. This will give that area another three or four months, maybe as much as five months for any settling unexpected on that project, and then when we do this paving project, it'll be a good slick road, and it'll look good, and we can get it striped back out how we want to do that, and that may be part of our discussion at the retreat as well. We may want to stripe it out a little different than we've had it in the past.
Before the amphitheater opens?
Yeah, so, the amphitheater probably is going to open May or June, maybe?
Ooh, way.
So, the timing of this, so if I can get it out to bid and get a contractor ready to roll, we would start Church Street first. That's the plan.
Are we doing anything special at the intersections, like we did in front of O'Neil Plaza, you know, sort of like it looks, has a pattern on it?
That's not anything I've planned, but we can always talk about that or...
If we could do something at the intersections, it would really spike the look, and if we could do that, even if we put the D on each of the intersections, that would cost a couple hundred dollars in paint, you know?
Yeah, if you do it with paint, it's a lot cheaper. If you go with other, any other thing, it's going to be a little different.
Let's talk about that.
Yeah, we can definitely make that part of conversation.
All right, great. So, I feel comfortable putting this on the consent agenda, I do not want to stop the progress. Of course, Mr. Roberts, you can still come back and give us information.
Absolutely.
Is that okay with everyone? Madam Mayor, I have no other items under Transportation.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair and Mr. Roberts, we appreciate all your information. Yes, sir. Now, we'll move on then, do we have any other business to come before council tonight from the elected body? I don't see any concerns or comments, so we'll move on then to updates from our city staff, our city attorney, Mr. Joel Dodson.
No business, Madam.
Thank you, sir, a staff attorney, Ms. Miranda Jordan. Okay, thank you so much. Chief of Police, our Chief Gary Sparks. Thank you, Chief. City Manager, or Assistant City Manager, Ms. Chelsea Jackson.
Yes, ma'am, I do have a couple announcements, just to remind you all that this month is very busy, so on Monday, you do have another council meeting, January 9th, you also have another council meeting on January 12th, City Hall and all other city facilities are closed on January 16th, and you have another council meeting on Tuesday, January 17th. You also have Cities United Summit in Atlanta, January 20th through the 23rd, you have Mayor and Council Strategic Planning Session at GMA Headquarters, January 26th and 27th, and then to round it off, you do have the Chamber Winter Ball, February 4th, Ms. Kristen Tate should have reached out to you all for tickets. And you have any questions about that, of course, you can contact myself or Ms. Marshall Hampton regarding the dates.
Thank you so much. Our Assistant City Manager, we appreciate you in giving us all that information, and for the public and the council, and Mr. Mayor Pro Tim, congratulations for being re-elected, Mayor Pro Tim. I will be out of the city in Washington DC, the 16th through the 19th of January 2023 for the US Conference of Mayors, so I'll leave, so I will miss the 17th council meeting, and when I leave from DC, I'll go straight to Cities United, so, but I'll be back after that, so I apologize in advance for not going to be here on the 17th. Yes, sir.
I should have said this during other business, so excuse me, but we have not had a council meeting since the police department had a promotion ceremony, and several of us were able to be there to congratulate all of the officers who were promoted, and I just want to go on record with how proud we are of our police department and the individuals who were promoted, and of you, Chief, for excellent choices across the board.
And I did make an impromptu announcement at that ceremony that we were raising the retirement age to 90, so the chief can't retire anytime soon, just so, I'm assuming the council will go along with me on that one.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, we had our city, our Assistant City Manager, we've come to the place number 19 on the agenda, comments from citizens and delegates, if you sustain the meeting, yes, ma'am, and you'd like to come forward, please, come forward to give us your name and address for the record, and you have five minutes to present.
I'm not really going to throw this at anyone or hit anyone. My name is Cindy Welch, I live at 3002 Concordway, Douglasville, 30135. I have been here a few times about the restriping and the paving of Stuart Mill Road, which got done by the county, part of it, the striping that they say they haven't done is because it's city, and I said, "But you all repaved it, you all should stripe it." The other thing is, there's these things that come out from the driveway of Coles, there are five of them laying in the street, they have been there since November, people have run over them, I have asked the city about it, I've asked the county about it, and all they do is put it back on each other. So, I brought one today, I'm going to get one to take to this commission meeting, and then I will bring the third one to you and the fourth one to them, and maybe I'll keep the fifth one just because, but I would hope, I mean, it's such a mess, people coming out of that driveway, because they think they can make a left turn, and these were supposed to prevent that, which is a joke, but something has got to be done. I mean, it is amazing to see what happens, and I will leave this with you for, to give to your road department, and if they don't want it, they can take it to the county road department, but I don't know what else to do.
Thank you so much, Ms. Welch, I'm not certain, Mr. Thompson did want to respond, and I'm, I thought, and we've just gone through SDS, and this is sidebar, but really, when it's city and county, isn't it a county road for maintenance?
So, Madam Mayor, that area, that area that she's speaking of, it is part of our IGA that we have with the county, so we will follow up with them, but I will let Mr. Thompson speak, because he does have comments regarding that.
Yeah, I just want to state that staff, city staff is currently in the process of working with AECOM to produce an analysis so we can figure out ways to improve their intersection near the Coles Shopping Plaza, so we are working on it. Change is welcome.
But these are still laying in the street. I mean, I think you'd at least come pick them up.
It's a, yeah, that's what I was saying, it was, our IGA with the county, so when the county says it's city and the city says it's county, when it's a joint road, it's county, because they're, but anyway, but we usually will still go and take care of things if we need to, especially if it's public safety.
This is a traffic delineator, it's property of the city.
Well, here, here you are, property of the city, there you are.
I'm just...
And I will bring the others forward to you also.
So, as Ms. Welch will agree, we had these things incorrectly a couple of years ago, somebody made a mistake, not me or my people, not any contractor for us, but there was a mistake made out there, and they paved a section of roadway that had been paved about three or four years ago, and so, I guess they had a little extra money, I'm being funny, that's a joke, but, so, they sort of destroyed some of our traffic delineators, I have talked to someone over there, I know they're aware, but it's, their contractor can fix this, I'll see, and I need to talk to, Marcus and I have a meeting scheduled, and we'll add this to what we talk about tomorrow and Monday, but I'll see if I can discuss with the county about how they get their contractor to come back and make these right, at least during the process of looking at something.
Was this Stuart Mill?
Well, I'm trying to figure out how the county ever decided that road needed to be resurfaced. There are many, many, many roads that are a whole lot worse, there was nothing wrong with that road. I come out of it two, three, four times a day.
It was an oversight on the field, the contractor in the field, it really was an oversight, and they were only going to, they milled one piece, you probably drive it, they milled that one lane, and I was not very nice about it, and they had to, I required them to just go ahead and do it all, because it was going to look really bad because of the one lane they did, so they ended up coming back and doing all five lanes, that was what they should have done, it wasn't our mistake, it was someone else's, but it's easily correctable, it's just going to take some time.
They also had a sign in the area where we were supposed to be able to turn into our neighborhood, people got tired of it, so I just parked my car, left the door open, went and moved the sign much heavier than I ever thought it was going to be, got back in my car, and everybody thanked me for doing that. It's like, what in the world?
I know, well, Ms. Welch, we can't speak to county, we're just trying to...
I know, but in my next life, I'm coming back as a traffic engineer.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. Any other comments from citizens and delegates? Okay, if not, then we don't have any other business to come before the meeting this evening, this meeting is adjourned.